Okay, this meeting of the Town of West Oilston Zoning Board of Appeals is called to order. The following members are present: myself, John Benson; Vice Chair John Minusmer; Christina Padoni; Charles Wickes; and Dave Phibia. The first item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing into the matter of Saravian Realty petition for a variance at 1484 to 186 West Oilston Street. Whoever represented from Saravian here?
Yes. My name's Andy Saravian. I'm the homeowner of Saravian Realty in Wachuson Plaza. And I'm here tonight with my son Anthony and Ralph St. Germain from Reddy Sign. We're here for a couple of reasons. The first one being we need to move the sign that we currently have to the middle aisle. That's due to the fact that we finally have a tenant that's going to be up front in the on the pad site on the property. If you look at these plans here, this isn't a... These were conceptuals, but this is where the new tenant is going. And if you look at the square up in the front, the little rectangle, that's the existing sign. This is the existing sign. The existing.
Gotcha.
Okay. And so they're requiring us to move the sign. So we're going to move the sign to the middle aisle. And right now the sign is 10 feet off. We're going to move it back to 40 feet. Or about, maybe it's 43, I'm not exactly sure. So it's going to be quite a ways further back from the road than it currently is. So for that reason, and the other reason being, for that reason, we need to make the sign bigger. Because it's further away from the road. And because, you know, our building is 600 feet off the road, makes it hard for people to find the places that they want to go. And in addition, we're going to build a building on the other side, the smaller side, a 2,900 square foot building, which is going to have two tenants to it. So we have to add two sign spaces for those tenants. So that, those are the reasons we need to move it and why we need to make it bigger. What we did today is, this is a sign that we would conform to the sign regulations right here.
Are these the scale?
Yes. This is what we currently have, okay? We looked at this option, could work, but it's kind of ugly.
And it's also inadequate for height. Since Andy has begun over there, the tenants have increased to 16 tenants now that we're having. So where he had, you know, tenant space before for a dozen or so, he's now up to 16. And because of that, the height of the panels are getting much smaller. On this, you can see that we're down to a 10-inch panel, which is going to allow us a six-inch letter. A viewing chart we have in the industry shows that a six-inch letter reads for about 175 feet. For people to adequately have time to signal a safe turn, they need 300 feet to be able to read that distance. 300 feet is between 10 and 12-inch letters would give you that 300 feet, so that the people could read it in time to make the signal to safely turn in to the plaza. We have several reasons why we want to expand the size of the sign. And, well, again, like Andy said, they're 600 feet back. They have 30 square foot allowed signage around the building, but we can't see that from the road. So the tenants are suffering hardships through exposure that their signs are going to be poor them until you get somebody into the parking lot.
Sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't hear you. Could you repeat that?
Sure. Where have... The issue that the tenants are having are, you know, I've talked to all of them about this, they have 30 square feet that they're allowed on each of the face of each of their storeways. But the problem they're having is that nobody can read them from even halfway across the parking lot because they're not adequate in size. Most of these businesses are small businesses, not Wal-marts and Walgreens, and they don't have the advertising budgets that big stores do. And they really rely on their on-premise signs. And it's one of the only affordable ways that they can advertise their businesses. And they're not getting any value out of that at all from the street. They're also not really getting much value on, you know, being seen because they're so... The letter height that's allowed, that we can fit on the allowed sizes that are under the existing code is so restrictive that they're ending up with six-inch letters, which nobody can read. What's going to happen is people are going to get really close to the exit, they're going to start slamming the brakes on at the last second and turning. And, you know, that's a public safety issue that I think that you probably need in order to be able to give us some relief here, is to have, you know, that issue in front of you to make that work for you. Right now, the sign code allows for a 15-foot tall sign. You've allowed us to go to 20 feet years ago under the existing variance. But what we're proposing is to go to 30 feet. And the reason being is that we can increase the letter height on the signs to 12-inch letters, which we show here, that everybody can have at least a 12-inch tall letters that can be read from a distance of 300 feet. The square footage of the overall sign, you know, comes in somewhere around 300 square feet. In relation to any of you who've been to Shute, like White City, they have an 800-square-foot sign. We're not asking for anything that big, but it's pretty relative to the needs of the tenants. We have about the same amount of tenants as White City does, but we're only asking for a sign that has 220 square feet of actual sign face. This is what you get with just everybody getting sign space, staying within the code. But if we could increase the size, if we could put a nice face on it, a nice header, it has some columns, kind of dress it up and make it look a little nicer than just, you know, some block sign that we're going to stick there because we need every square inch we can get. So under these, you know...
Ralph, in reality, the sign for the tenants is actually 220 square feet.
Exactly. We're at 220 square feet of actual sign space.
Sign space. But the added width of the sign, height of the sign, is to make it decorative and to... You're supposed to have 20% of the sign for your name. That's the code, I believe. And so to do that and to make it a decorative sign, make it something that looks good for the town, something that the town could actually be proud of. I mean, there's a lot of signs up and down Route 12, but honestly, if you look at them, they're kind of mishmashed. You know, some are small, some are big. There's no uniformity to it.
Is that the point of the revised bylaw on signs is to have uniformity?
Well, I would hope that's what it does.
We would, but with a little leeway, you know, to be considered for, you know, special circumstances, like with this particular situation, where we have more tenants now than we had when we originally went for the variance, for this sign here that's there existing. And, you know, with that, in order to keep it, that's why we did this sign, is to kind of show you how small the panels get. When we stay within that size, it becomes inadequate for reading for many businesses.
So, because if we left it at this size and I add more tenants, now I have to shrink the size of the existing tenant signs. And they're not going to be happy about it. They're going to complain about it. And I don't blame them, I would too, you know.
So I guess we would ask for relief under, you know, the setback being increased from 10 feet to 40 feet? The fact that the building is backed so far that the existing signs there are ineffective for the tenants, and also for the public to be able to see who's in the plaza. And, you know, lastly, I mean, the overall look of the sign, just to have another box, I mean, everybody in town, nobody's doing anything to make the signs look nice, you know, they're so caught up in just trying to pack as much copy as they can into the existing square footage. Everybody's just basically having no creative, you know, approach to their sign, to just putting anything up there that is big as they can get it, just to get, you know, their exposure up. And again, you know, signs are the, you know, the most important part of advertising for all small businesses, you know. Again, they don't have the advertising budgets that the big box stores have. It's really needed for these people. So under a financial and under a hardship and under, you know, the...
The setback.
The setback and the increased tenants and the fact that it won't be easily... It would not be safe for people to signal it and turn in time into the plaza because the signs are so small they wouldn't see them until it was too late. And then you got a lot of jack and breaks up together.
Isn't every plaza in town going to want to double the size of their signs?
Well, we're not asking to double. We're only going up about 25 percent on size. We're just trying to...
You're 15 feet tall and you want 30, right?
No, no, we're at 20.
We're at 20 right now. We're at 20.
But most of what we're doing is for aesthetics. I mean, we're coming out with this, we're coming out with this. It's more for aesthetics than it is for... The sign box is still 220 square feet of sign. That hasn't changed, okay? But we wanted to aesthetically make something that looks good.
We're at 200 square feet of sign space right now.
Right now. And we're going to 20.
We're asking for 20. So actually, we only added a 10% increase of the actual signs face sizes. So it's not a lot of relief we're asking for, it's just enough to, you know, suffice for the additional tenants that we're bringing in right now.
Can you really go 10 feet taller than you currently?
It'll be 10 feet taller. This existing sign is 200 square feet of sign space. The actual sign space on here is 220 square feet.
And it's going to be taller, too?
Right, it'll be taller.
How much taller?
10. 10 feet, man. As you can see, it's the scale, all of this is the scale.
Any questions?
And 40 feet back from the road.
And the issue of this is why we need to go wider as opposed to taller was because we don't have the room to go wider. We have saw mains where we're trying to locate the sign in the median. So when you pull in, there's a median in the middle with the lanes on either side. And we're restricted by water mains and saw lines and we call it digging.
Topographical limitation.
Yeah, we're really stuck. We can't make it wider.
I don't have a lot of options as to where I can put it.
Dan, the building, would you like to say something?
Just for the record, I'm Chris Lund. I'm the building inspector and zoning enforcement officer for the town. And I just wanted to note, with this current applicant, the bylaw itself is at odds when it comes to a plaza that has much more tenants than the minimum standard of three that the bylaw is set for. When you have a bylaw that has a 64-square-foot area for the businesses, for the identification of the business center not to exceed 64 square feet, and then the overall not to exceed 80, doesn't take into account when you have also an eight-square-foot requirement per tenant. And you have three tenants, or you have, in this case, 16. And we have another, not just the chart that in the bylaws, but then we have a section in the bylaw specifically for business centers. And when you have a bylaw that's immediately written that it limits the amount of tenants and then it requires a 20% square footage of that sign to go towards the plaza sign itself, you end up with this condition that we have tonight where, to make something that's aesthetically pleasing and follow the bylaws, they're at odds with each other as soon as we have this amount of tenants. And I just wanted to point out for clarity that the bylaw reads that there's also a requirement for landscaping. So the intent is to have something that beautifies the neighborhood, adds value to the street, according to the reading of that bylaw. And I think, I just wanted to point that out as part of this presentation, the bylaw standards and how they're at odds with 16 tenants, as well as that aspect that is written in that has to have landscaping. We're going to have, that'll be part of permitting through my office, and therefore, there's an aesthetic component that it's trying to achieve. Thank you.
And again, the... We're looking at, you brought the point that I had, I wasn't even aware of, it's the 64-square feet that's allowed for each person, for each business. We're only at 44 square feet.
That's a total.
Yeah. And in total, between the building and the pole sign, we're at 44 square feet, not 64. And we're asking for 54 square feet. And 64 is under the bylaw that says that each business would get, but we're not even approaching that. We're asking for 54 square feet for some tenants that are going to be at the top. And we're at 44 square feet per tenant overall signage for their business on the lower sections here. So we're not really pushing the limits.
Is this new building that's going in going to be on the sign?
They won't be. The other building will be. The other building, which is going to have two tenants in it, they will be. The new building is going to look to put one standalone sign, and they're going to put it, they're looking to put it down here at the beginning of the property, at the, let's see, if you're looking at it. So right now, the sign is right there. They're going to move, put a sign, they're going to come and ask to put a sign there.
And that's not, if they wanted to not conform with this, they would have to submit something.
Something, right.
I think this is just based on what's currently there.
How many vacancies are there now? I see only one, I think.
Well, this isn't even exact. There's no vacancies there.
Okay.
We have, there is one, but it's, it was the tanning salon, but I've rented it. I just got to find a home for the tanning beds that are there, so to get them out of there, so they can move in, so.
And which way will the sign face? Will it face the road, or will it be perpendicular to the road?
Perpendicular.
So that you can see that display from...
From both sides.
From the northbound approach or a southbound?
Exactly. Yes.
We plan on, in lighting it internally, on this portion, we use the all LED to reduce our power cost. And the channel letters up top, those are the individually lit letters that you see in a lot of places. So it's really, you know, well done, it's classy, it's not tacky or anything like that. We're not asking for any message boards or any, you know, clutter or anything like that, but just a minimum to allow the tenants a fair chance at, you know, advertising their businesses.
A question for the building commissioner. The, there's a limitation to not more than, the name of not more than 12 tenants. Are you aware of any limitation that says the plaza can't have more than 12 tenants?
There is no limitation. As long as the building load handles the occupants in it, and it's within the setbacks and there's no issues, they can have as many tenants at business centers as feasible within the structure.
So do I, do I understand this, or do you understand it, that if you have more than 12 tenants, tenants number 13 through whatever, just don't get a piece of the sign?
You've keyed right in on a point, John, with where the bylaw is very restrictive in both size and tenancy. It doesn't take into account somebody that's well within the rights to have more than 12 tenants. And I would imagine with a business center, you're going to affect that tenancy and who's going to want to be in your plaza extremely if they're not allowed to have signage, which any other business center of 12 or less would be able to have.
Chris, offhand, do you know the square foot of the Walmart sign in town?
I don't.
I do. I actually checked it. It was 64 square feet on the wall. And the pole sign, I believe, was 40 square feet, if I'm correct, from what I recall. I checked it about two weeks ago.
The whole thing or just the Walmart part?
Just the Walmart.
Just the wall and the top.
They've got a five-and-a-half-foot tall letters up there. And the average tenant here is getting under a foot.
Do you know about how far from the West Oilston Street that's located? Probably right on West Oilston Street.
The Walmart sign, yeah, that's set back five feet from the parking lot. Whereas Andy's set back 43 feet, I think, we're going to be at. And again, that, we're just restricted by what's in the ground there, all saw lines and Apollo lines.
How tall is the Walmart setting, again?
There's this 20 feet, from the ground to the top of the sign is 20 feet.
20.
Yes. And we're asking 30, but Walmart only has one tenant in a sense. And they got the other four over on the other side, but, you know, for the most part, they don't have 60 tenants, which is what we're struggling with. You know, I mean, we could make the sign wider, we were approaching that. We've done several designs, trying to figure this out. But then when we called Dig Safe and we saw all the stuff underneath, we were restricted as to where we could dig. And that's why we ended up where we are, at that central aisle and 43 feet set back.
I have a question. The, the top tenant, well, all the panels are two feet tall.
Two by 10.
But you're talking about having 12-inch letters. So it's only half of the...
We lose four inches to the retainers, so we end up with 20-inch actual panels showing. And if you want to have at least three inches top and bottom for adequate space around the letterings, it would be easily read. And so you end up with about 14 inches is the maximum letter you could really put into that sign. My quick 12 is an example, showing it to scale, you know, trying to, that pot liner here, that's 12-inch letters.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's the relief you're asking for with the setback?
We really didn't need a relief for the setback.
Yeah, that's what I was trying, you were saying that, and I...
No, no, the relief was first to move it, because I needed, because I was grandfathered where I was, I couldn't just move the sign. So we needed relief, first of all, to move the sign.
Okay.
Okay? And then, second of all, we were asking for the enlargement of the sign.
Okay, so you weren't at the 43 feet issue was because you were, you were, okay.
Yeah, no, we're, we, we could have, if we could have put it 10 feet from the road, you know, we'd still be within the...
Right, no, I was looking at the, the rule, I didn't understand why you thought you needed it.
Yeah, I'm trying to, in line with what Cumberland Farms or whoever goes in there does, they're going to want to put a sign up. And we thought that our sign being right up against their lot was not really going to be a good idea. We thought it'd lay out better if we put it in that median in the middle and get it away from them. And it would more suffice to direct people into the main plaza.
If you get more tenants in, do you add them to the sign? Do you make everybody a little bit smaller and then stick a few more?
That's how it's been working. That's how we ended up so small. And that's what we're looking for relief from.
And do these people, do they depend upon it? Is, how big, large is the business? Do they get more space, or do...
Well, we kind of do it right now by, the larger space you got, the more, the bigger the sign space you got.
So you can get the top ones if you were the bigger tenants, and the smaller tenants are getting those lower ones that are half-size. So these are two foot by five foot on the bottom, those are two foot by 10 foot at the top. But minus retainers and stuff, like I said.
And you'd have to make new names for all these people.
Yes.
A couple more people moved in.
How many, so you want for 16?
Eight, 16 spaces.
And how many tenants do you currently have?
14, or 13, right now.
And we're adding two on the new building.
Two on the new building. And I was, well, my office is there, I was going to take a space.
The new building, you said, though it's not, I thought the new building was going to have their own sign?
No, the, this, on this side, but on the big side. But on the small side, I'm going to build a 2,900-square-foot building there, and that's going to have two retail spaces, approximately 1,400 each side. And those two spaces are going to be on this sign. So they're not going to ask, you know, we're not going to ask for another sign for this space. Just the wall, we'll ask for the wall sign.
And that's a key space that Andy wants to use for his own business, obviously, he would probably forgive that.
If I got another one, if I got another tenant, somehow, some way, I would give up that space.
Sacrifice his for the tenant.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, we're looking at...
Because that's what we discussed about it, anyway.
Is 16 the max?
Yeah, that's it. Once, the only thing that, you know, you can't look into the future, because, because like, let's say, right now, Planet Fitness, they took three spaces, you know, or four spaces. Now, let's say they leave someday and someone else comes in, now someone says it's too big. Now you've got to go back to maybe making it two spaces, you know? So now, now I'm going back to, you know...
Trying to figure out how to...
So how to make it work. But, you know, that's a, right now, this is, this would suffice, you know?
What's that sign going to be made of? Are those going to be columns of marble or what?
You know, they'll probably be aluminum. We're looking at either foam or aluminum. And there'll be, the steel poles that actually hold the sign will be running through them, is what our goal is. And then these will just sleeve over the existing poles that will hold up the sign.
And is that black cot on the bottom included in the height?
Yes.
Yeah. And that's aluminum, they, you know, it's a steel frame with aluminum wrap on it, an anodized aluminum. Same with all of these parts that are in here. This is all sheet metal custom bent aluminum trim. We have crown moldings rolling in along the top. So it's all aluminum, steel, and polycarbonate faces, you know, translucent faces with LED lighting.
And these columns are columns that you buy and they go over the pole, you know, it'd be fluid columns.
Chris, the, for this to be a plaza, these, this new building is sort of outs on the street, and all this, the main building, that Planet Fitness, Sophos School, whatever, is a completely separate building that is separated by a fair distance. Would that all be considered the same plaza?
It is from the standpoint, so that, that space that Mr. Saravian is talking to has gone through a planning board approval previously.
This is 2,900 square foot building?
Correct. And that, that, that building footprint's already been predetermined, and there's conservation land beside it as well that's already existing, and there's been a retaining wall put in. And the only way to access that building is by coming into the main entrance and taking a left at that median to access that building. It's, it won't have separate on-off entrances from Route 12. You can only get to it from, from the plaza.
So, so by virtue of that entrance, it becomes part of the plaza?
Correct.
Does anyone else who's here this evening want to be heard on this matter? Okay. Anybody else from the board have any questions? How long's it going to take to, to build this?
The sign? Six to eight weeks.
So basically, the old sign will stay up there until the new one's built and then you tear it down?
Exactly. That won't take too long.
Same day that closes up, that one come down.
I have any other questions?
I have one other question. The height of the plaza now, the buildings on the plaza, do you remember what the overall parapet height is on that building?
I'm going to say, Sophos School's 30 feet.
30 feet.
30 feet.
30 feet all the way around here.
And this sign's going to be 30 feet?
Has the planning board... Has the planning board given us any guidance on this? What do they think about this? Is this going to the planning board?
The sign?
Yeah, you know...
It doesn't go to the plan?
Doesn't go to them?
No.
They have no opinion?
No. I think they might've been allowed to comment when, when the petition was, was made. Notice went out to different head, department heads, but they don't have jurisdiction on, on the sign.
Uh, I would move to close public comment if the public has no comment.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm, I'm of the opinion that the, uh, the bylaws don't contemplate this many tenants in a plaza. And, uh, the rationale seems clear to me that it's, it's safer, it's more aesthetically pleasing, it doesn't, it's not an end run around the zoning regulations, they just didn't quite account for having a sixteen tenant space. And so, I like safer, I like prettier. Uh, I like not circumventing the rules, uh, and so it seems to me that there's a good basis for this.
Certainly seems to be a topographical basis for removing it from the existing, since there's sewer lines in the way.
I agree, I like that it's forty feet back from the road. I like the way it looks and I do feel that the, uh, the bylaws are destructive. And I do not accommodate sixteen. Charlie?
How far away, I gotta go over it again in my mind. Can you see those twelve inch letters?
Three hundred feet. The reading distance for a block letter, um, at twelve inches is three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet. And that's a straight road going through there?
That's right, and, you know, under the, uh, under the law for, you know, driving, you have to signal, they say, three hundred feet prior to making your turn. And in order to be able to do that, you need to be able to redesign to know that you have to turn and have time to signal.
And that design, is that design sort of colonial or what the hell kind of design is that?
Well, you got me on that, I've been doing this for forty-four years and it just comes off the top of my head and I don't follow any architectural, you know, uh, formats. I just kinda go with what I think is pleasing and I fool around with things and, and then I come up with something and they like it and...
I asked him to design something really nice, and he showed it to me and I liked it, and I was like, okay, that's it.
Well, actually, he's trying to get me to build a sign for nickels and dimes, and I said, that's what you're gonna get for nickels and dimes over there, but I think you should do this.
I have a question for you. Okay, you're saying that you're gonna have, um, a, a tenant on the other side?
The big side.
The big side, okay, and it's three hundred feet, the letters can be seen?
Yes.
Okay, so when you're coming up the hill, when that new tenant puts up their freestanding sign, will your sign, is it gonna kinda like...
Their, their sign is only gonna, furthermore, their sign is way over here, okay, this is where they...
It's gonna be on the other side, okay.
Exactly.
Motion to vote.
Call a question.
All in favor?
I think we, I think we formally need a motion.
I'm sorry?
I think we formally need a motion.
All in favor of, of calling this?
Oh, okay.
Yes, so we're gonna vote?
Aye.
Make a motion if I please.
I, I, I move to, uh, allow the variance and grant the petition, uh, as drafted and submitted.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Variance is granted.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
John, you are the official, uh, thank you, writer of the... She's, it's being passed.
I voted yes, sir.
Yeah, you voted yes. If you said yes, then you check yes.
Swiping for cheap. That wasn't just like deep in thought, I swiped down for cheap.
Okay, next, next matter on our agenda is a discussion with Richard Heaton regarding issues concerning Afro Terrace and ninety-four North Main Street Affordable Housing Project. Mr. Heaton is the town's forty B, sheriff's...
Community housing specialist.
Community housing specialist, thank you.
May I stand, is that...
Whichever is most comfortable for you.
I feel like the secretary can give you a microphone.
Whatever's, whatever's...
You are, it's your, it's your, whatever makes you comfortable.
I prefer to stand if it...
Would you aim the microphone at yourself though, so that, uh, viewing audience can hear your melodious voice?
Thank you, sir. As you mentioned to the chairman, I'm the community housing specialist, I work for the Affordable Housing Trust, providing support to the town on both developing affordable housing and monitoring the affordable housing that's in the town today. The trust has asked me to come to you and make, offer my services on two projects. It's at your pleasure, whether you'd like me to, I'd be glad to, if not, it's, it's, uh, it's not, it's up to you. The first is Alpha Terrace. Alpha Terrace was, was built in, uh, was approved as fifty-two units in two thousand and five. It is substantially complete, that's a, that's a, that's a technical term that's used in the forty B, forty B vernacular, it's technically, technically substantially complete. But there are a set of issues that are open that need to be resolved from the town's point of view and other points of view.
May I ask a quick question, just a point of clarification, that it's Afro Terrace and not Alpha Terrace?
Afro Terrace.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, just wanted to make sure for the record.
So what, what I would propose doing is reviewing these open issues with the, with the developer. Identifying those that are appropriate for the ZBA to focus on, those that are appropriate for other boards in town to focus on. And then bring those issues to the board, to you, in, in this case, if there were issues for you. And make both a recommendation and, uh, as to what you may wanna decide to do. I'm not here to make any decisions, I'm just here to gather the facts, put them on the table, so that you can make the decisions that you need to make. The, the issues that, the issues that are open have to do with several areas. Number one, we're not exactly sure where the affordable units are, very basic issue. There were some decisions that were made by the board way back when, uh, they were modified, there've been several, several different, uh, exchanges of communications, but the assessors have a different set of records than the, than the, than the Affordable Housing Trust does. And it's something that needs to be sorted out, it's not a big deal, but it needs to be sorted out. And the appropriate parties need to be notified so that the changes can be made. The second issue is three of the affordable units have not been sold for five years, I think it's five years. That's a concern, those are units that the town designated to be occupied by residents who needed them and that they have not been able to be sold. I understand one of them may be in the process of being sold, but over five years, that's a major issue that, that, that needs to be addressed and that, that needs to be solved. I think there are solutions to it, but, uh, they need to be, they need to be addressed. Several of the units on site are rented, they're not the affordable units, they're the market rate units. That's something that's specifically stated in the deed riders, that is not something that happens.
Sorry, could you, you say that last bit again? It, it's something about the, the deed riders allow this, the law this?
The regulatory agreement and the deed riders do not allow for rental of units.
Okay.
Rental of any units, even the market rate units?
I need to, I, that's one of the issues that needs to be addressed, I, I, I'm not sure whether it's any unit or just the affordable, but that's a very valid question. Thank you.
Beck, can I ask a question just, so, cause this was built in two thousand and five as fifty-four units that would be sold?
Fifty-two. It was, it was approved in two thousand and five as fifty-two units, of which thirteen are affordable, is that...
To be sold as a unit or to be rented as rental property?
To be sold as a unit, condominium.
Okay, then that's very different than a rental property.
Absolutely, very different, very different. There's been some confusion on the as-built plans, the as-built plans are supposed to be delivered to the town. They may have, it's not clear to me whether they have, that's neat, that's an issue that needs to be resolved. Uh, the condominium association documents that are in place need to be approved by the town. I don't believe they have been approved by the town yet. And one of the most important issues from my point of view is when the project is completed, the project needs to be, a cost certification needs to be done on the project. In other words, when you as a town grant a forty B permit, what you're basically doing is waiving certain bylaws, rules and regulations that you have in place to allow the project to be built. In exchange, the developer has agreed to limit his profits to no more than twenty percent of the development cost. And anything that's over twenty percent, in this case, is returned to the town. There's a formal process to do a cost certification, where he produces all his costs, all his revenues, and tells the town what profit he made, and then a determination is made what to do, to do with that. That should've been done years ago, it may have, but I haven't seen it, and that's one of the issues that needs to be addressed. So what I would propose doing is, uh, sitting down with the developer, reviewing all of these issues, identifying where we are, and coming back with a formal report, a formal statement as to what, where, where we stand and a recommendation as to what you may wanna do.
I think that would be extremely helpful, and I think we speak to the whole board that we are very thankful to the Affordable Housing Trust for extending your services to this, this matter, and certainly thankful for what you do.
Thank you. If I could move on to the, the second issue is ninety-four North Main Street. This is, this is probably one of the most complicated, complex forty B projects in the state. It dates back to two thousand and four, when the board approved sixty-eight units. It went through several appeals to the Housing Appeals Committee and other courts, has changed ownership. And it is now to a point where the, the present developer wants to pull building permits and wants to get started on it. And the building inspector needs a statement from you that the developer has met all the requirements of the comprehensive permit, and that he can in fact issue a building permit. The building inspector is working on all the issues relative to the building permit that he needs to work on, reviewing the plans, uh, all of the items. But there is a set of forty B documents that need to be very clear, that he has site control, that he is a limited dividend organization, that he has regulatory agreements, he has monitoring agreements, and all of these things are done before a building permit is issued. And what I, again, what I would propose doing is meeting with the developer, going through those issues, and coming back to you and giving you a report, or in some cases to the selectmen, because they need this verification also, that they should enter into some agreements with the developer. So I would do the same thing for this.
Sounds helpful.
That's always enormously helpful, um, I'm not sure if you...
When can you start?
I'll ask him to...
I probably started already.
I know, I was thinking so. Do you need us to just vote to approve this or...
I'm sure, I, I, we can vote on it, but...
I don't think you're actually doing anything for us.
I mean, we're not, we're not bound by any, that you're just gonna give a report to us and recommendations, um, you're gonna speak to some...
I'm here because I quite frankly didn't wanna do all the work, wanted to find out that you didn't wanna have the results and...
Well, I think the board, uh, certainly wants to get as much information so that we can make, any decision we make on any matter is fully informed. And you are a specialist in this area, so getting your, your input and particularly if you are talking to the developer, I think that just makes you all the more informed and us all the more informed, which I don't see how that's anything but good.
What's your timeframe, just as a, as you're doing this?
I, I would think probably in thirty days, maybe sooner.
So thirty days to probably add to our next agenda.
Yeah, I think, answer it, let us know.
That'd be appreciated.
Putting, being on the agenda for that.
Right.
Charlie?
I thought they, they approved ninety-six units, not fifty-six.
The original decision for, for ninety-four North Main Street was for, was for, um, sixty-eight units. But it went through a set of appeals, and it was, finally came out at ninety-six units. You're right.
So that's what we're talking about, put ninety-six units in there?
That's right, that's what, that's what the developer has, believes he has approval to do, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, um, so, please let us know.
Thank you.
Yeah, with you. Okay, next on our agenda is a discussion with, is it Rune?
Ruane.
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 Ruane, property management regarding issues concerning Afro Terrace. We have a representative? Do you identify yourselves?
I'm Ellen Ruane, principal of Ruane, uh, to my...
And I'm Andrea Austin, I'm a property manager involved with Afro Terrace.
Okay.
Um, Ruane Property Management was hired as a property manager for Afro Terrace, uh, as of December first, two thousand and fourteen. The Board of Trustees hired us, um, after the complex was turned over to the Board of Trustees from the, from the declar...
The Afro Terrace Board of Trustees?
Yes, hired us after it was turned over from the developer.
And when was it, talked to you last fall?
They were here at the ZBA, I mean, I think in August.
I just wanna make sure you say Board of Trustees, we, we're talking about...
Which is the last, so let's get somebody else.
Um, and they were here in August, and I, I know they, they spoke with you about some concerns that they had about their project. And one of the things, I believe that at the end of that, by reading the minutes, we were not involved at the time, was that the as-bills would be, um, delivered to the town within thirty days of, of the meeting. And as far as we know, there's been no as-bills delivered to the town by the developer, which the Board of Trustees for Afro would really like to have because they wanna have an engineer go over everything that, that, that is there and make sure it's done, was done properly.
Okay.
So they're requesting that, to get a copy of, of that. Um, there's a few items that we wanted to discuss, um, there are forty B units on site, as you know, there's thirteen, um, ten of them have been sold. We have a forty B unit owner that has moved to California and is... We have a forty B unit owner that has moved to California and is currently renting his unit. I don't believe that that is allowed to be done.
Have you received any written communication from any town officials on that matter?
I've actually emailed, um, I think it was all of you and copied Toby, um, with a copy of the lease from the forty B unit owner, asking if it was allowed. Um, so I didn't really get a clear answer as to whether it was permitted or not. But based on the documents that we read, the forty B unit owner is not allowed to rent his unit. Um, so we have not taken it to any other boards within the town.
I have a question, Mr. Heaton.
I don't think I have a spot, Mr. Heaton.
Is this something that would be on the deed rider?
Yes.
Do you have any information that you might be able to shed upon us? Is that, is what she's saying correct?
What she's saying is correct, it's not allowed to be rented. If it's an affordable unit, it specifically says it is not allowed to be rented.
What is the recourse? Is, is it specified in the, in the CMR?
No, the recourse is, is not defined. In, in this case, is my understanding that the town manager has sent or is sending a letter to the resident, to the owner, advising him of the terms and conditions. Well, he must, if, if, I don't want to make this too complicated. It's one of the issues that I would look into. But basically, if someone wants to rent a unit, they need to obtain approval from the monitoring agent, which is Chappa. And if Chappa grants it, which they probably would not, then he's allowed to rent it.
With this and with the, the as-built plans, the, uh, I'm very interested to know, uh, this may be a question for you, maybe for you to look into, or maybe a question for the town council, the ZBA's enforcement power. When we can demand things all day long, but without any teeth behind that, you know, and how one enforces that. Is the doubt, is, is there something that the selectmen would have to pursue as a legal action? Is there some specified relief under CMR that would allow enforcement on, on any of these issues?
There is, and I'd like to go through that in thirty days with you when I understand better.
Oh, because obviously I think you, we were understanding, I am not aware, but if the as-built plans have been provided, then we need to get that, we need to get that to both of you, to trustees, to whoever. But the enforcement to make it happen is something important, so that he, like I said, you can ask for things, but if you don't have the power to enforce it, it's, right, it's empty.
Am I correct in, in, from what I read from the last meeting minutes, that the town does not have an engineer that would be reviewing the as-bills?
Well, the Conservation Commission wants the as-built plans as much as you do, for, I think for similar reasons. And they would review the, they would review the plans. I'm not sure whether there would be, whether the building inspector would review them, but he probably would look them over.
Thank you.
Yeah, I admire how the Conservation Commission was expressed.
Is board directors going to be reviewing, having their own engineer review these as well when they receive them?
Yes.
So.
Do you have any objection to us waiting for Mr. Heaton to give us some guidance on our, our authority, making recommendations on where we?
In thirty days?
Yeah.
That's fine.
I said, in any matter where we're being asked to compel something or prohibit something, for example, rental, I want to know how we would go out of force. And that would be, a strongly worded letter may not have much effect.
One other, um, issue up there with a different forty B unit that's been brought to our attention is we've gotten multiple reports that there are eight to nine occupants in one of the forty B units. So, um, as a three-bedroom unit, I think the town allows two occupants per bedroom.
What is the square footage of that? What is the square footage of that unit?
I don't know.
I think it's, it's like my unit, seventeen fifty, square feet. Chris, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You. So based on the square footage of that unit and it being three bedrooms, there, what is the building?
Building code has it as two hundred and square, two hundred square feet per resident or occupant in a residential unit. So you, you're borderline, I'd have to look at that seventeen fifty and just confirm that living space.
So, but based on that, that would be, if there were eight to nine individuals living in that house, that would be?
It's eight point seven five at seventeen fifty. So it's actually, if that's a true account of that interior conditioned space, then by my code, it is not an issue.
Well, unless there's nine. The, the three-quarters person can stay, but if that person goes all the way to nine, then we have an issue.
Right. But also, through my code, there's no enforcement. Like, I don't go into existing dwelling units and, and count occupants per se and, and do any type of enforcement. The only time we get into existing structures is if we think there's a significant risk to life and limb, and then, then we get, we go in. But usually that's, you know, egress issues, those kinds of things.
Why do you believe that there's eight times occupants?
It's been reported to us by several residents in the community.
I think our unit bylaw, our unit bylaws say that a unit can have like two married couples per unit. You know, they, two, two share, you know, sort of like.
Do you have like?
Two married couples per unit?
Yeah, a hu, you know, like, I don't know. I don't know if it's an old cohabitation rule or what it is, but you know, it's, it's like, you know, you're not gonna, you can't have, it can't be like back when I was in the seventies and everybody was sleeping together. It's, it, there's a limitation on how many, I think it limits how many families can be within one day. You can't have like six families living, living in a single-family home. Okay? So you can have yourself and maybe a son or daughter that, a son that's been married over, but it's not like, you know, your cousin and his husband and your sister and her husband.
So based on the bylaws you have, that was turned over to you, what, you must have something, your property management, that you do as a recourse to church of B or what is the?
This is in one of the affordable units.
Right, right. So that's why, you know, we're asking for some guidance as to.
One, one other thing to, my code's not the only one that gets involved with occupants. You have a public health code that also gets enforced that, that has some jurisdiction.
I think those other. Our enforcement power is going to be limited to within the relevant limits of forty B. If there's a public health code issue, it's just not, the ZBA can't enforce public health codes. That would be another, that's not saying it's not our responsibility as far as forty B, but I don't know that we can, because it happens to be forty B and forty B happens to fall under the ZBA, the ZBA can start enforcing health codes.
How can we find out how many residents are in that unit?
Dick, you have any idea how one goes about? I mean, town census data would be the first. You know, assuming people are actively recording, town census data tells you how many people are in a unit.
That's probably the best way.
Yeah, you, you are, it's the one I get, makes all kinds of nasty threats if I don't report all that stuff in my census.
You can put your own wine.
It does, it's a lot of things.
You can have your own wine, other trustees can pour it, new wine.
I don't know how many people live in there. You know, we have it, but how do we enforce it, how many there?
How many cars?
Well, I don't know, there's a half a dozen.
Yeah. There's at least six cars.
And we can check the registrations on the vehicles and see what they're listing as an address.
I'm just thinking for, I'm just thinking where they're registered, if they have children. If they're registered in town, the mailing address would be town.
So if we check the registration, the address for the registration might all be in the same place. If they've ever.
Possibly. It wouldn't necessarily be in the census either. Should be, shouldn't it?
Well, they might be, if they fill it up.
I understand the, there's a huge difference in the world between should and actually, but.
Right.
I just don't know if there's anything for us to do or decide on that.
Well, I, I think the first order of business on that is to find out, one, if you can have eight to nine people. Um, because if you can, then obviously that kind of makes everything else move. If you can't, then determining, how you determine that there is in fact whatever the number that would be allowed exceeding that. But I do think you, there's a lot of things. Is it allowed? Is it allowed, is any pro, if there is a prohibition, is the prohibition under forty B? Because if it's not under forty B, like I said, there may be a public health issue, but that's not for us. So in order for, for this board to act, it would have to be prohibited. It would have to be prohibited in something related to forty B. Then I think we'd have to determine that there's actually eight to nine people living there. And then finally, there would be, how it goes about forcing it. So I think, order of operations, the first thing is to see if there is a prohibition on having the eight or if it's nine, whatever the number is. So I think that's the first thing we need to know. Is that prohibited? Because if that's not prohibited, then all those other steps just don't matter. If that's prohibited, then we need to go to the next step.
And on that same unit, that unit is problematic in the community as far as following the rules of the association. There's always trash in the yard, they leave their toys out, their bikes out, and so on and so forth. And letters have been sent, and they still have not done everything that's been asked of them according to the rules and regular bylaws of the association. Now, being a forty B unit, is that something that you could act on if they're not following? You know, they, the, I mean, we're doing our best, but as a forty B, is it something that you can enforce or, you know, I don't know, that's why I asked.
The trash issues and the, in, in those kinds of things, again, speak to the public health inspector. Barbara Mark is your public health inspector. She'd be the one to go over there and observe a condition and work with the folks there to correct it.
Okay.
Okay.
The question that Ryan would have, maybe, I forgot your name, sorry, to figure out, is the, the recourse to some, a normal unit not following is notifications, fines, things of that nature, mostly monetary. Is there a limit to monetary penalties on a forty B? Because of their, their condo fees are less, so that, do they pay seventy percent of the fine? You know, there, there's, I mean, they can run up quite a bill here. Are they now responsible for lawyer fees if they don't respond? I don't, I think that's more of a question. A forty B unit is, are they exempt from everybody else?
I don't know the answer to it, but Dick seems to be shaking, saying no. I would be very surprised if the mask code on this got so specific as to get into the weeds on how condo association fees are assessed to forty B units and when there are penalties, how much? That would be, that would be really specific if they went to that level. But I can't say for certain.
It sounds like it's a private.
They are specific in condo fees.
Yes, but, but you're, you're really digging down when you start saying, you know, individual penalties that may be, because I gotta vary from condo association to condo association.
It sounds like it's a private enforcement issue under the bylaws and the rules that the condo association is at. And not under the, not under the, uh, zone regulations of the town. That's how it sounds.
We're just trying to get some clarity.
Well, hey, I think it is, I think it is, it is up to the condo association. But what the town agreed to do when they issued the comprehensive permit was to review the condo association docs, documentation, to make sure that it was consistent with what has been done in other communities and that the residents were as protective as possible. So that's what we would like to do, is review the condo documents.
And that was one of the things that you mentioned earlier. All right. So again, I think this is, uh, you have something to come back with. In order to get to that point about fees and whatnot, that have those condo docs get reviewed.
Right.
There's going to be a lot of steps that need to be taken.
One of the other issues is landscaping plan that was supposed to be submitted as well. And the association and Board of Trustees don't feel that landscaping is up to par or up to what was part of the comprehensive permit and what was part of the landscaping plan. I don't know, I haven't seen the actual landscaping plan, but it should have been submitted to you folks. I would like to copy up if we could gather.
I'll have it in the tables.
Yeah, that's your list there. Thanks.
And at the meeting that they had in August, the Board, Board of Trustees for Afro had asked that the occupancy permit for the last unit to be sold be held until all of their issues at the complex were taken care of by the developer.
Could you say that one more time?
The Board of Trustees asked that the occupancy permit for the last unit to be sold be held back, not be issued until all of the issues, all of the concerns that they have in the complex, like after the engineer looks at the as-bills, the as-bills and that sort of thing. They have drainage issues on site. Um, they have landscaping issues, they have a lot of issues that they feel need to be addressed by the developer before the last occupancy permit be issued so that the last unit can be sold. Because at that time, once the last unit is sold, the developer is basically out of the picture. They want to be able to hold him accountable.
This last unit is not an affordable unit.
Oh, it actually is. So the last regular unit is currently under agreement, scheduled to close next month. So there are two units left, both of which are affordable units. It was one of the trustees who was at the meeting in August. His understanding is that the unit that's under agreement, one seventeen, I think it's one seventeen Afro, um, which is a regular unit, was the one that was supposed to be held for the occupancy permit as the last unit until everything was agreed to be up to par according to the plan submitted. However, six and eight Jasmine, which are two affordable units, are the last two units to be sold.
One seventeen's a, affordable. One seventeen is affordable.
It is affordable.
Uh, okay, there's one nineteen.
One nineteen.
One nineteen.
The town doesn't have a bond.
Right, there's no bond.
So what you, when I was here last time, what you said you would do, because all the occupancies are released to the building inspector through you to make sure everything got met. I mean, if you don't have an as-built yet and all the units are sold, why does he need to give you an as-built?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
I said, if you, you know, part of the requirement was that he give you an as-built.
Yes.
Okay? If he sells all the units, why would he ever give you an as-built?
Well, this is something that I think Dick is kind of looking into for us.
Because there's no bond or anything.
Right.
And there are, again, there are drainage issues. There, there are quite a few issues that need to be addressed before the developer is completely released from the.
My recollection that the drainage issues in particular were a concern to the Conservation Commission.
And the, the board has hired an engineer to go through and will give us a report of all the faults that they find within the complex, which I can certainly share with all of you when we receive them.
If you could, anything like that, if you could share with Mr. Heaton.
Yeah, I want to speak to the certificate of occupancy. You don't issue a. You don't issue a certificate of occupancy until all the boards and department heads are satisfied with, with what they've received, Conservation Commission being one of those as an example. So, um, the process, when you issue that certificate of occupancy is to verify that those boards are satisfied and have received what they needed in order to close out their files on the project before that certificate's issued.
So then maybe that's where I got that from?
Yeah, it, it very well could be. Um, so we'll be speaking to the codes and the requirements of those individual boards and departments before a certificate is issued.
That is why.
Slightly different than, you know...
That's why.
Okay.
That could have been my misunderstanding.
And just for clarity, so...
In the comprehensive permit issues.
Since the trustees addressed the board, whatever date the meeting was, not, the board hasn't acted or approved anything relative to Afro Terrace in, in any capacity, whether it be for occupancy sake or, or anything. They did, Afro Terrace, as far as I know, never, has not come before the board for anything since then.
We have not received anything
Yes.
since then.
So they, they just sold the unit, so they had to have had an occupancy permit?
My understanding is there's three certificate of occupancy still outstanding. Um, I have not issued any since I've, I've come on board in October of 2014. I have not issued a certificate of occupancy, um, for any of, any units at Afro Terrace.
So two Jasmine actually just sold, I think it was last month or the month before. So was an occupancy permit issued for that unit prior to closing?
It very well could have, if that unit met all the require, if it got all its inspections and sign-offs for that individual unit.
And who, and with the building, will you yourself do an inspection on the unit to see that everything was to correct?
Yes, yeah, so it would, that can be all done for that individual unit and not necessarily require Conservation Commission to confirm the site is up to par and all those, those kinds of, it'll, it will boil down to that last unit to, to verify ASBILs for site conditions and Conservation Commission is satisfied with any of their orders of condition. Those kinds of things will all boil down to that very last certificate of occupancy. So technically, out of three, two could be issued still, as is, and then the last one would be the one held for the whole project.
Even if it's a 40B unit?
Yeah.
The forty, uh, 40B, again, any kind of 40B, there, there's a component here that the ZBAA gets involved with on, on 40B. Um, Dick might be able to speak to that a little bit more. But as far as a certificate of occupancy on the u, on, you know, common practice with the unit, it's all about your inspections through wiring, plumbing, uh, through final, and then that last block through.
Right, so we, we just, where the last two are 40B units, we want to make sure that that is followed.
I'd be more than happy to work with you on that and keep the communication open so that we're on the same page with that, and, and as well, it sounds like Mr. Heaton would be involved too.
I just want to bring something up. So potentially, what could happen if there's only one not sold and, which doesn't have the occupancy permit? Mr. Ali could sit on that for as long as he wanted without doing the improvements and what he needed to do forever. With, with the concerns we have with drainage and the roads and the landscaping, and that's a concern that we have as a board. Safety issues, we have some safety issue concerns.
Mr. Heaton, has the Conservation Commission received anything about an ASBIL from the developer? Want to tell us?
We haven't received the final ASBIL with us yet.
You have not?
No.
And do you have any idea when that might be?
Supposed to be, we have our next meeting Monday night.
Actually, John, if I can, um, that last meeting that, that Conservation Commission had, right? There was an ASBIL plan submitted, but there was not an order of conditions spoken to by an engineer to certify that the order of conditions were satisfied through CONCOM. Not, so I believe the applicant had submitted an ASBIL plan, but had no certification on the order of conditions for Conservation Commission being satisfied as part of that final submittal. And that went back out and, and there's a request out there right now for that order of conditions to be spoken to by the applicant's engineer.
That's good, we haven't got the final ASBIL, which we need to sign off on.
You haven't got me there. So basically, you're just waiting for them to have their engineer sign off on it and send it to you guys?
Well, sign off, you have to compare it to what was supposed to be built and what isn't built.
Okay, and that hasn't been done.
And will the town have an engineer look at those as well, or?
No, yes.
I think that's all we have.
We just requested a copy of policy sent to us as well, so that we have ASBILs on, on file.
And copies of any of the plans, please, or something?
Just that we have it for ourselves.
Hmm?
So that we go to you, right, the ASBILs we go to you.
The final ASBIL's told the Conservation, and they have to approve them before they can sign off on them.
As we are reading, um, for a report for Mr. Heaton, I invite you to attend the next meeting that Mr. Heaton presents so that you are kept apprised of, of his findings and information that he gives to the board.
Absolutely.
Point of clarification, um, if it takes thirty days, it may not be the next ZBAA meeting, it might be two meetings from now.
Okay.
So, you can check the agenda and see what's going to be on it. But I did not want you to feel misled that this was going to be concluded in thirty days. It, it might take two meetings. It might take longer.
What day of week are, here, what thirty days?
Day, day twenty-eight or something like that.
Fifty-fourth, fifty-fifth, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.